Good evening. It's 6:50 on Monday, October 12th, 2020. And this is the regular work session of Scottsville Town Council. The meeting is going to start here in about 10 minutes. And we're just gathering all of our council members in a forum here. So I'm going to cut this video here at the microphone and put the meeting agenda up on. And the recorded portion of the meeting will start in about 10 minutes. Tune in in the future. Thank you very much.
Hi, Matt.
Hi there. Good to see you here. Nobody else online yet, and no one in the room to meet?
Okay. Hey, Jeff.
Hey, how are you, Thomas?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Hey, I'm doing my final report for this last year's grant.
Yeah.
And I need to get up with you about the supporting documentation for the matching.
The matching direct deposits and stuff?
The direct deposits and then the matching.
Oh, the gas receipts and things. Yeah, sure. I'll be in the office tomorrow morning for sure. Matt and I have a phone call around 11:00 if you want to come by before or after that.
Okay.
I mean, I think I'll be in the office most of the day tomorrow, all day tomorrow.
Yeah, I've got a training between 1:00 and 5:00. And I'm supposed to work tomorrow night for Tony. So I wasn't planning coming in.
Sure. Yeah, no, that sounds like a long day already. What works better for you later in the week?
Wednesday at 10:00, I got to train the trainer meeting that's going to go for two and a half hours. So what I'm going to do is.
You want to shoot me an email and I could just work on it, send it back to you? We could do it remotely over the next couple of days?
Yeah, I'll try to send to you what proof they're looking for that was sent to me by Doug Stater.
Okay.
And that give you a good idea of what we need. We just need to know, they need to know that we made payments. So I need a check that's going out.
Yeah, I think I remember it. It's the copies of the Mansfield Oil invoices with, you know, copies of our check stubs on them. And then a spreadsheet of the direct deposit numbers that cover all of the hours that we had during the reporting period.
Yeah, and I think we went like $68 over what they budgeted for us. We spent like $2,568.
Okay.
So we'll only, we should only get back like $1,300, well, a little under $1,300. So probably $1,260 some dollars in the next check.
Okay. Well, I'll, yeah, I'll start on that tomorrow when I'm in the office. And yeah, I'll keep an eye out for that.
Okay.
I mean, I talked to the, I got a little further on our e-summons remittance as well. It looks like that has been getting handed over to Almarone County Finance. And they've been expecting to get it to us on a quarterly basis, which is why we haven't seen any of it yet.
Okay.
So I'm expecting the check from them on that to cover the first three months here in the next week or so. And I have the contact of who to get in touch with if we feel like we need to ask them to remit that on a monthly basis instead.
I would say we do it on a monthly basis, but why are they giving it to Almarone County instead of us?
I'm not quite sure. I never got a really clear answer on that one. Something in the way it's coded through the General District Court. But that's the way it's been going.
It's not supposed to be like that. It's supposed to go directly to us.
I don't know what to tell you about that, Jeff.
So we need to contact the Supreme Court and find out why it's going that way.
Okay. I have not had any direct contact with them so far. That's just been Ms., what is it, Morse and Ruyard, Rullard.
You're going to have to go, can you hear me?
Hey, Jim.
Hey, you're going to have to go through the clerk. Supreme Court is, the clerk runs the show on this, Jeff.
The clerk of the General District Court or?
Well, both of them do. Whichever one the problem is, you just got to start with the clerk and let, use her contact to get to the Supreme Court.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if you want to, Zach, you can go up and mess around with the Supreme Court, but I don't know where you can, how, you know, I don't think you're going to get very far.
I've been conscripted. I'll do that, Jeff. I'll get down there. Hi, I'm Zach Bullock.
If we all go, that might help.
I don't know. I don't, why is that?
No, it wouldn't, Jim. No, it wouldn't help. You're right.
Oh, Lord.
I actually just came in on the tail end of this. What's the problem?
We, we realized that we weren't getting our e-summons remittance. I thought it was supposed to be coming from the Circuit Court, Circuit Court Clerk's Office. Got in touch with them. They said they were sending it. I said they weren't. They said, oh, no, I'm sending it to Almarone County.
So that makes two.
Right.
But somebody, actually, I take it back. Somebody needs to notify the person at the county who took the deputy county executive's place.
So that's what I, I've tracked all this down. And it seems like the county is expecting to collect this and remit it to us on a quarterly basis. I don't have a good explanation for why everybody feels like the county needs to be a pass through on it. But the county understands that it's our money and is expecting to send it to us. So it's not the same problem that we were having before, at least at this point. It doesn't seem like it is anymore. It was a very clear instruction on how we got into that problem before. But thankfully, it seems like this one is going to land in the right place.
All right, I heard from Dan at 7:00.
Not heard from Dan.
All right, we'll go ahead and start. Dan, you can join us when he gets here. I have just Payne, Councilman Payne, in the room with Matt and myself. It's good to see everybody else on the big screen. We'll go ahead and call the work session to order and we'll ask the chief if he would give us his report.
Good evening. How are you all today?
Good. Matt, if you can put up the September statistics for everybody to see, I'd appreciate it. We had a reduction in the number of tickets we wrote this month. Just didn't have that many speeding through town. Total of 18 tickets were written. Court proceedings are almost back to normal. There's still some negotiation and plea bargaining going on with the attorneys. I've not gotten down and sat with the Commonwealth attorney as to why, but that's, that's across the board for most of the law enforcement agencies at this stage of the game. I had a brief conversation with Major Jenkins at the police, the county police department. He said some of it's, most of it's not unreasonable to him. He seems to be pretty confident with it, so I'm not really pushed the issue that much. We didn't have any DUI arrests. Actual patrols were at 59. The county, actually, we had a total of 147 calls. 102 of which we responded to, 45 of which the county responded to. We assisted the county with 20 calls outside of the town. And we didn't have any parking violations, so. A question was presented to me at the Public Safety Committee meeting this evening that was rescheduled related to the e-tickets. I have a training class scheduled for this Wednesday through Digiticket. They're going to train me how to train the rest of our staff. And then once I complete that training with them, we'll download the e-ticket system onto the computers. And hopefully by November 1st, be able to go live with that. There's going to be some growing pains with it, as we know. I mean, it's just a computer and that's just how it works. Not a big deal. I think we shall see as we go through it. There's, seems to be some concern about the bird feces over at the farmer's market. And one of the suggestions was rather than, well, I say rather than, but putting up some wire mesh along the beams and the roof trusses to try to prevent the birds from sitting on top of those trusses. Probably the least expensive material to use, I would think. I will tell you that on the courthouses, when I was working in the sheriff's office, those little spikes really didn't have much of an effect as far as keeping the birds off of the areas that we were trying to prohibit them from landing on. Let me see, what else can I think of at this stage? We have completed our final quarter on the DMV grant. And I'm in the process of preparing that final report to send off to DMV to get reimbursed for those hours. We had like 68 hours left in this last three months because of the COVID issues that prevented us from doing the work required or the work agreement we had related to it in the previous quarters. But we were able to successfully complete it and did a fair amount as far as summonses went for speeding. We didn't get a lot of seatbelt tickets. We did get one ticket where there was a juvenile that did not stop for an individual in the crosswalk. So some of the, most of the other tickets were for registrations and inspections, really. I can't think of anything else at this stage. Do you all have any questions?
I just want to say that I'm glad to see that being tickets represents the type ratio of your summons, because I think those are the most important for public safety.
That has, that has been constant since I've started working here, really. And I will, I'm sorry, go ahead, Stuart. Any other questions for the chief?
Chief, did you and the safety committee have any discussion about the communications update that Mayor and I received this month?
Are you talking about the radios?
Yes, sir.
No, we didn't. We talked about that briefly.
Okay.
But I, I still, at this stage, I think it's all tied up in litigation and it's all frozen. We're just not going to be able to access it until somebody comes up with some type of an agreement. I don't, I don't know what communication you've had with them.
I haven't. I was speaking more just in terms of the updates that the communications center is doing to radio coverage to better serve our area.
Okay. So, no, I haven't discussed that and to go into greater detail. I just. I was going to report on that, that meeting when I get my report here in two minutes.
Okay, great. I just want to be sure. Great. Thank you ever so much, Mayor. Thank you, Chief.
Well, no further questions from the chief, and we appreciate all you do. And thank you so much. Thank you. Thank your officers for us, too. Yes, sir. Chamber, well, there really hasn't been a whole lot of chamber activity other than the, I don't know who's running Scottsville happening right now. But it's being published online regularly and it gives a lot of useful information. So we can thank whoever that might be. ARB, Mr. Ball.
Yeah, so some updates, a couple new COAs and sort of next steps for us. We approved the COA for a gazebo on 240 Warren, which falls under our purview because it's a substantial alteration to a property in the historic overlay district. Think it's going to look nice, though, but that was our first gazebo, so let's flex our muscles there a little bit. Fences have become an issue in town, not necessarily because they're obstreperous, but just because people are building them, which is kind of new. I think there are four in total that have gone up in some part of town, two most recently on Harrison and Bird Street. We approved the COA for one, but the office did not catch one that was built beforehand. So it's worthwhile noting that fences that are under three and a half feet or temporary do not need a COA, but over that height are. And so that's just something that we're keeping our eyes on right now. And in our next meeting, we're going to share out some resources for talking about fences for, not fences, guidelines for fencing. We have some in our own, or not our ordinance, but our design guidelines. There's only about a paragraph written about it. And so Aaron Root is going to get some things for us to talk about, to inform our conversations with property owners when we do address fences. Thomas is moving forward with our application for certified local government as part of a historic district, which ostensibly might get us training and hopefully some money to put in the hands of historic property owners. Thomas, do you have any updates about that?
Dust that off. We'll put before you at your next meeting some conflict of interest language that needs to be beefed up in your guidelines as well. And some of the requirements for qualifications to be on the board need to be reviewed. I think we meet all of them, but we just need to make sure that our guidelines reflect what they want to see as well.
Great. And a certified local government program doesn't come at any expense to the town or anything. And largely, it recognizes, as Thomas sort of mentioned there, the work that we already do in terms of evaluating properties, issuing COAs, maintaining a board with certain credentials and all of that. So more to come about that if we are accepted. The Dollar General landscaping is sort of this moving target. We can't seem to get any follow through on, mostly because of turnover up there. But, and I wanted to share this with you, Ron, while we're here, because I found, if I don't find it soon, I will look later. I will look later. But we're hoping to get some contact information for the Dollar General because they had a COA last year to do the landscaping plan. In any event, Ron, it might be helpful to send the COA we have had on file their way. I looked at an email communication that seemed like they were saying, please let us know what you want us to do. So if you, when you were matter in contact with them, I think it'd be beneficial just to send that their way because I think they don't know what we're talking about. Like, I think we call and we're like, hi, we have a landscaping plan for the Dollar General. They're like, we'd like to help you.
Right, and now Matt is, it's been my life shaking. You see, I guess we can take care of that this year.
Okay, so I think that would help move the conversation forward because I think a lot has gotten lost in the shuffling. In terms of our own inventory, we're going to do our inventory of historic properties in the next month or two. Matt's going to be putting together a spreadsheet for us because right now, we've just, I don't know, for the last 20 years, the inventory has just been on a Word document, which is fine, but it doesn't really allow you to see change over time or to keep records and compare them year to year. So Matt's going to be putting together a spreadsheet for us so we can just add a new tab every year or a new sheet so that our notes can carry over year to year and we can easily go back and look at properties over time, which can both tell us how properties have done, we're mostly concerned about decline, and properties that we've had persistent issues with. Because in terms of enforcement with properties, it's, it's better for us if we can tell a property owner, hello, we've been talking to you for three years about the same issue. And this is a better way to document both that, those contacts and our reviews of the property that have that information. So that's kind of internal to us, but I wanted to share that with you just in terms of our process because it impacts how we communicate with property owners around their buildings. And that is all for me that's sort of germane now, but of course, I'm open to questions.
Sure. Any questions?
Yeah, I was talking to some folks up in the Food Lion Shopping Center recently. And they are interested in seeing if we might be able to put some signage up along with the Tiger Fuel sign, just informing people what businesses are in the shopping center, which seems like a really good idea to me. I also have some concerns about what that sign might look like. I don't know, you know, if there's been any thinking about kind of what that Tiger Fuel sign would look like and how we might be able to leverage it to the advantage of the people in the shopping center as well, which would, I think, you know, benefit everybody involved.
Yeah, so I think the, so the issue would be, that's fine, they should put a forward, like an application for it. But the question will be, who's doing it? Who's on the COA? So who's authorizing the sign? If Tiger Fuel is doing it, then they need to come forward with the sign design or, but I guess they own the whole plaza now, don't they? Yeah, so they should, yeah, so if Tiger Fuel comes forward with a plan, we can talk about it. But it would probably be a good idea for them to speak with us first before they start like drafting something. So that like, we can talk about the design guidelines and so that they know what to plan for.
So is that something that the Architectural Review Board could reach out to them to start that conversation? Or, uh-oh, Mr. Balling's going to.
Why doesn't somebody reach out to David Sutton's son, who's running the Scottsville Shopping Center now? He runs Tiger Fuel. His name has escaped me, but certainly that would, that's how I would start. And he's certainly, it sounds like something that he would be agreeable to. How could he not be?
Matt here. I have that contact.
Okay, Matt, if you can, if you can connect up with me, I'd be happy to help you with that.
Sure.
Okay. Or you can do it all if you want.
Anything else from Mr. Ball?
I actually, no, not from Mr. Ball, but I would like to go back for a moment, Mr. Mayor, to you and ask if there has been any additional outreach from the chamber to its members about the SCAN space? I know that, I think I saw a mail that went out, an email went out initially, but I think more that we can, we can, you know, let people know about that, that it's a business space and that it's available to everybody in the chamber as well as everyone else, the more useful.
I was hoping, two things, I was hoping that perhaps SCAN would have contacted the local radio TV stations about it. That seems to have happened yet. I know a couple of the, NBC, CBS. I will try to put something together. Matt told me this morning that there is a brochure available now distributed with all that information on it. And I don't know who's distributing it or where it's being distributed, but it's out there. So I've made several visits to their facility downstairs, just chat with people that are overseeing it and, you know, see if they have any questions, so.
And I just wanted to thank Laura for reaching out to all of the schools in the area and letting them know about this. I did it, started doing it and found out that you already beat me to it, so.
I was just going to speak up and say, yeah, I sent it to the local school. Yes, absolutely. Glad to help.
Nothing else from ARB and Plan and Commission, Mr. Ball?
You've got to be fast to beat Laura to anything, really, honestly. You've got to get up the day earlier. So Matt will be relieved to know that I actually remembered this time to have my report ready for the meeting, so he won't have to present that. So a lot happened at the last planning commission meeting, and I'll just kind of go down the list kind of in the order that appeared on the schedule as best I can here. We started off with the public. Matters not on the agenda. A lot of comments about Tiger Fuel Market. I feel like we could have headed a little bit of this off by kind of announcing at the beginning that the market itself is not in question so much as the special use permit. So either way, the public got a chance to kind of hear out their concerns. Among those concerns, primarily what we heard the most of was competition for the businesses. So they were concerned with some of the small businesses that would, would struggle with the presence of a new chain business, lack of historic or small town feel. I know that they are planning on trying to form the, kind of the structure of the building and the motif to be somewhat historically conscious, but I, I think people still feel like that's maybe not quite enough for what they were hoping for. A big one was increase in traffic. There's not a huge understanding of what kind of traffic flow is going to change. Obviously, the entrance is far enough away from the intersection to commit DDOTs requirements, but there's still some concern about the, just the increase of traffic on that road. And at that intersection, some folks spoke about potentially the need for stoplights. There's not a huge, there's not any, any major indicators that that would be necessary, but that's something people are concerned about. One of the things that several people brought up was the diesel pumps attracting large trucks. And something that was brought up at a previous meeting about this was that the, this, both the pump capacity and the height of the awning are not going to be sufficient for large trucks to be able to fuel. So they are basically steering this towards kind of small, like dump bed trucks, pickup trucks, things like that and below. So they're not really trying to get, track trails, track trails won't be able to effectively service the station, so that shouldn't be such an issue. After we had gone through all that, we got into the special use permit. We had the public hearing on that. Among those, the primary concerns with those were, Mr. Carr with the Fire Department mentioned the demand on the water supply. And the architect, Justin Schimpf with Schimpf Engineering, or the engineer, I'm sorry, he's an engineer, addressed that and basically said that the primary concerns. or the engineer, I'm sorry, he's an engineer, um addressed that and basically said that the primary concern for the um for the Fire Department is not so much any other single draw on the water supply, it's the capacity of the of the water uh tank. Um and it's more, the concern is more the fact that there's not enough of a draw on the water supply in order to justify keeping the tank full beyond a certain point, because then the water gets stale. So in fact, potentially, if we had more draw on the water supply for the town, um the tank would stay at a fuller level so that when emergency uh needs um uh occurred, there would actually be more water in there. So it's more likely that this situation with the car wash would actually increase the um capacity for the Fire Department when they needed it and decrease it. But either way, it's a negligible amount based on um precedent and other situations that are similar. Um the uh the Planning Commission passed a motion to uh vote on essentially addressing and vote on the uh on the special use permit at the November second meeting. This allows the Planning Commission to review any additional information that comes in. Um there were a few items that the um Tiger Fuel folks didn't have specific answers for, and they're gonna try to get those to the Planning Commission so we can review those before we vote. It seems like the Planning Commission doesn't have any specific concerns with it, so I'm kind of anticipating them to vote in favor of it, but I don't know for sure on that one. Uh we reviewed a special use permit for an Airbnb on Valley Street. Um this is something I got a lot of support from Planning Commission, uh myself included. I think it's a great thing. I don't full, I don't really support Almaro's strict uh stance on Airbnbs. I think they're really, really a positive thing. They're a great addition to the community and give people flexibility to to travel and do things a little bit differently. Um so I I'm certainly in favor, and there's some other planning commissioners who spoke out in favor of it. There's gonna be a vote um after a plan, a public hearing also on November second, um where they'll they'll present to the public. And I'm not anticipating quite as big of a crowd for this one, because I think people are generally probably indifferent or in favor of this. Um one of the things that we asked them to do is come with a plan for maintenance and up uh upgrades for the building. I think based on some of the photos of the building, it looks like it needs a little bit of improvement. So hopefully we'll see a little bit of a a little bit of a plan for them to kind of make sure that the building is is um uh not just continuing as it is. It seemed like they really had um a kind of a serious approach to it. Um they're, they are uh super host, which if you're familiar with Airbnb, basically just means you have a certain number of reviews and they are a certain ranking in order to merit that. So that we, you know, we're kind of expecting them to do a good job with that, so. Open that page. Which uh which property is that for? Um let me, hold on, just let me pull up the 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 agenda here. Um it's it's on Valley Street. Can we just?
Most of you would probably be familiar with it. It's the Childress Building, the old bank, um yellow storefront there and a one, two bedroom unit upstairs.
Matt, do you or Matt or Tom, do you guys have the address by any chance?
Number three fifty.
It's three fifty, Valley. Thank you. Um so yeah, I'm kind of hoping, honestly, I kind of hope uh this is just, this is just me interjecting my personal opinion here. Um but I'm kind of hoping that this pays away from more Airbnbs. I think that'd be a good um a good thing for the town. Um.
And can I jump in real quick here?
Please.
Um one of the things that I was very pleased with the Planning Commission is they made clear on this particular um application the importance of trying to fill the downstairs commercial space with a business. And I was very appreciative of the Planning Commission making that known um to the applicant.
Yeah, yeah, I think that might have been plenty, but that's somebody brought that up. That's a good, that's definitely something worth mentioning, so. Um I think we're hoping to hear from them on that as well. Uh number per second. Is that something you can control on the special use permit or is that just like a request? You would know as well as I would, unfortunately. Um that would be something for Mr. Bowling or for somebody else.
What's the question, Zach?
Well, so so the special use permit, I guess, is to turn the space into an Airbnb. So I guess the downstairs commercial would just be buy, ride zoning currently, right? So they wouldn't need, the special use permit, in other words, wouldn't say you can have your Airbnb, you know, special use permit, but the downstairs has to be a business. That wouldn't be part of the permit.
Well, you can put conditions on your uh on a special use permit that they're reasonable.
Okay. I mean, I think I think what maybe, I I don't know strictly speaking, but theoretically, maybe they we we could put a um condition that um the space couldn't be vacant for more than X amount of time during the year or whatever, so that they would be required to.
Yeah, I was just thinking that. I think that's a great idea.
Vacancy thing.
Yep.
So that's, so so maybe uh Mr. Bowling, if you and and Matt and Tom and sort of the legal minds in the room wanted to uh make some recommendations on it, that would be helpful for Planning Commission to have that for our November second.
That would be a tough one. I'm not sure you can put a time limit on it. What hap-
No.
Well, I don't think you can. Um what happens if through no fault of the of the property owner, uh it's vacant? I mean, does that mean that the upstairs has to be vacated? It has an ongoing use on and on and on? And that's one of the dilemmas of trying to uh make all the people that have vacancies on uh on uh in Scottsville uh rent their units. Right now, you don't really have the state enabling legislation to enable you to do that.
That's what I was gonna say, Jim. It seems that tying those two things together would create a situation that could have the inverse effect that you intended, where if they they can't find a use for the downstairs, they would vacate the special use permit and not have anything they could do upstairs.
So personally, that was, that was not, go go ahead.
Yeah, could we require some uh uh could require a good faith, ongoing effort to try and and locate tenants for that for that retail space as part of it, not require amount of time, but at least just have them show some kind of attempt that there's they have.
You can ask, you can ask for that, but I'm not really sure how you can require a uh something of that nature.
As as Jim said, they expressed an interest in filling it, and Matt and I would be happy to work with them, you know. Having um active owners who are in contact with us is is a step further than where we have been with that property in the past. So hopefully, under ordinary partnership, you know, our regular economic development work can uh take course here.
And 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 just because I've been interjecting some of my own opinion, I want to make it clear that I'm not specifically advocating for there to be some sort of terms to the special use permit, but that was something that if if there's some interest in the town from uh seeing something to that nature, that if there's anything that that planning, on that town council or or anyone on this call has any thoughts on you, um please forward it onto the Planning Commission so that we can discuss that. Number second. Um uh then um my favorite topic, the Small Area Plan. Um eh so we um we did have a motion to um uh dissolve the the special um committee, the Special Plan uh Planning Commission Committee uh that was editing and reviewing the uh Small Area Plan. That concludes any editing or any changes at this point, um sort of um Town Council or Planning Commission wanting to to do that themselves. My, it was my hope to be able to, uh I told the mayor this, but uh my hope was to actually be able to present um the finished document at uh our next uh meeting next Monday. Um unfortunately, there were a number of changes that did end up happening in our special meeting right prior to the Planning Commission's meeting on the fifth. Matt has been great about turning out those changes really quickly. I would really strongly encourage uh all of you uh to review the document prior to um the November meeting, and I'm gonna do the same thing for Planning Commission. I've been doing that, encouraging them to read it. I would really like to see this um get reviewed, get approved and move on. So I think we have a really good document right now. I'm really excited with the changes. Matt just, I mean, just did some amazing changes that are very, very different from what was there before. Uh it's very um, it's very user friendly now. Um it's it's got a lot more flash and pop that I think that is gonna um not sparkles, that kind of flash and pop, but just like it really is 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 a much nicer looking document and really easy to read now and record information. So I'm hoping to get that uh approved by Town Council um in November. Um I think that was all that I had. Uh yeah, I think that was all that I had for that. I do want to just throw a couple of personal sort of personal related notes in there. Just for full disclosure, I recently started a a job with Gropen, and I'm gonna be um probably not involved in the special use permit voting or discussion going forward, because uh they do have a relationship with Tiger Fuel. I don't want there to be any conflict. I don't have any commission or bonus or any benefits like that from there, but I just don't want to seem like I'm trying to help Tiger Fuel because it would potentially help Gropen. So that's gonna be something that you'll probably see me step out of a little bit more and let other folks uh take charge on it. Um and I don't know if this is the right platform for this, but I just want to get this out here so there's no uh there's no seeming that I'm I'm kind of skirting the law. Um I did move out of town recently. I do have a lease until the fifteenth in Scottsville. Um I've been talking to Matt and the mayor um and Tom about trying to figure out how that's gonna work. Um I do need to get back with Matt, Tom, uh and and the mayor and kind of figure out a plan, but um it looks like I probably will be stepping down at some point in the near future. I don't know whether it's necessary for me to step down as soon as my lease expires or whether I can stay on until a replacement's down, but that's something we're gonna need to look into. So I just want full disclosure. Do you guys know that that's going on?
Thank you.
And and for the record, I would have loved to stay on, but uh life is what life is, so.
Yeah, any other questions for Jim? We appreciate how you've been doing and the Planning Commission, and I only comment on the Airbnbs is make sure they get a business license.
Got it.
So that's, that's an important part. Uh Treasurer?
I can, I can speak to the financial report that's um before you hear. The um financial report that Mr. Runzworth sent out um the year over year, the front page looks pretty encouraging. The town has more cash on hand than we did at this time last year. Town Council was real proactive and responsible at the beginning of this emergency in making budget reductions and adopting a balanced budget. So we still have the full tank of reserves that we normally run with. Interest rates have been cut down to rock bottom at the Fed level, so we're not earning much on our savings accounts. There's only about $3,000 of interest income in there over last year. But the um the federal CARES funding has also been received. Um $100,000 came in and that's in the bank in its own checking account uh pursuant to the county agreement that we have. We've track, we're tracking the CARES Act expenses um within an emergency category. So on page eight of the financial report, you can see the progress of the CARES Act spending in the four project areas that Town Council voted on. So you you can see the budget um increase of $50,000. We appropriated that much. Um we still need to appropriate the second half of another $50,000. So that's a work session item for later in this um agenda to discuss those project goals, but we're able to track that carefully, and I feel good about the compliance there. Although the training, I have to admit, has been pretty limited from the federal level. Um I still don't have as much guidance on CARES Act compliance as I would like, but that's something that um all of our local government peers are in the same boat. Um so it is a good fiscal position now, but um we still see a lot of uncertainty in the economy and the budget going forward. At the town level, we made almost a 50% reduction in our expectation on meals tax for the year, because we really weren't sure how folks were going to respond to um going out to eat and drink, and that's our single biggest budget line item. We're doing well in this budget compared to the reduced forecast, um but it's still worse than what a normal year would be. We've been seeing some months that are not a normal summer month, more like a winter month. And so we have concerns about what the real winter is going to bring. Um so Council had spoken previously about maybe taking a mid-year look at the budget um around December, January, February. That's probably what it's.
Any, any like further, Matt? Any questions for Matt?
Um I was just gonna make that request, actually, on behalf of Council, if we could see a mid-year in actually December of the budget at the reduced rate compared to previous years at the full rate, so we can get a better understanding of how we're actually doing.
And Matt, now we're talking this morning, uh Christmas sort of falls right near our December meeting, and we may want to talk about in November uh what we want to do for uh December as far as work session, council meeting, all that sort of thing.
Christmas is on a Friday, and your business meeting would be that Monday. See what you want to do about the week of Christmas.
You can keep that in mind for our next work session, so we can make a decision on the November council meeting.
I got, I got one question for Matt related to CARES funding and and our programming thus far. Um Matt, is it, are we still getting that additional $50,000? Is that a thing?
That's right. It's, and that came, so that's in the bank. We have, so we've received the full $100,000.
It was received since October first, which is why it doesn't uh show up on this statement in front of you.
Got it. So in terms of, because we were gonna eventually sit down and sort of look at how we'd spent the money this time around, then decide how we wanted to spend the next bit of money. Um and I've been down to uh Victory Hall and seen um, you know, the the workspace, which is very nice and being well, well-run, it seems. Um but is there a plan for getting feedback from our partners in December, January, so that we can make an informed decision about where to go next with the funding? Keep it the same or change?
We um we don't have that much time. Uh it has to be spent before the end of the calendar year.
Got it. Okay.
You know, one thing Matt and I talked about this morning when we had our our morning meeting, uh we might want to look at uh helping people that are having trouble with food and rent. Uh there's been a lot in the paper here recently, uh even though there's a moratorium on evictions, a lot of landlords and property owners are getting tired of that and they want the money. So they want to develop some some program to use a significant amount of this next $50,000 towards assisting people that are in financial problems if they're rich primarily and uh house things, that sort of thing. So that's something to think about.
We have this on the agenda down there under uh four A to loop back around to later.
Okay, good. I think that's a great idea.
All right, anything else for the Treasurer? All right, Mayor's report. Uh I've been trying to have regular meetings at least once a week to keep people on what's been been going on that uh on that end of the block uh last on the thirtieth. Uh Chief Laura and I, I was with the chief in his office, Laura was on uh Zoom, and we met with the head of the uh Emergency Communications uh Center and his uh number one radio guy. And we spent about an hour and a half uh learning all about the $18 million project that's coming about over the next year, where we really increased our radio uh capacity for law enforcement officers. Right now, it's really a kind of a bad setup where they have to use one uh radio for local, we're out of town stuff, and uh then it's it's relayed here and there and yonder, and 911 doesn't work all the time. So it's called Enhanced 911. There's gonna be four new towers put up uh around the county on the mountain tops and uh just really improve the the whole uh the whole coverage for law enforcement then and fire and rescue. So that was a good meeting. We uh Matt, Laura, Thomas and I met uh uh the other day to talk about our capital improvements projects and uh project wish list and the upcoming Board of Supervisors meeting. Uh so we'll be talking about that later too. And uh I met with a friend of mine, uh hopefully met, I mean, hopefully uh Dan got her email or got an email from her. She's putting together a calendar, 2021 calendar with word files of Scottsville Historic Sites, and uh she wants to sell this, make some money, but she also wants to donate portions of the profits to a town project. And so I have uh told her about the Trails Project that Dan and I have talked about at Van Cleve, and uh hopefully, she says she thought that sounded great. She's a longtime resident of the area. Used to have a restaurant here in town, and uh she would like to divert some of the profits from her calendar sales to the Trails Project. So um that that's, we talked about that.
Uh Ron, can, yes, can I ask you a question about the Trails?
Sure. Um addressed today, and he's the Trails guy.
Is he on the call? Where's Dan?
I'm here.
Hi, Dan.
How's it going?
I missed your committee report. I was waiting for your committee report, Dan. Sorry, Ron. You can continue. I'll I'll hit you at the end.
Actually, I don't see anything on the uh agenda about a committee report from anybody other than those that have spoken already.
You're right. I'm just so excited about the Overlook Trail, Dan. That's why I interrupted.
Yeah, go ahead. Uh Dan, go ahead and tell us what's going on. It's, basically, I only have one more thing on my report, Dan. I'll make that real quick. You know, Virginia is one of the few states that is not observing Columbus today. You know, Virginia is one of the few states that is not observing Columbus today. We're observing indigenous peoples today. And, you know, the Monicans were a big presence around here, Monican tribe. But that was kind of before Scotts Landing ever came into existence back in the 1500s. The Monicans were here and then they moved, moved westward. And I didn't know until Matt and I were talking recently, he is a real authority on the Monican tribe. He was, he was a volunteer with the, their, what is it called? The Monican Federation.
I've, I've, I've met with the staff, been to their, been to their powwows and I'm real impressed with the tribal organization here nearby in Amherst.
So with the Indigenous Peoples' Day, I had always been told that there was some Cherokee in my ancestry. And about three years ago, I had a cousin that's just crazy about ancestry.com. And she found a picture of my great, 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 great something grandmother who was a full-blooded Cherokee Indian.
Wow.
The way that part of the family got started, she was supposed to go on the Trail of Tears and she married a white man. So she wouldn't have to be, leave her home and go west. So there was some truth to what I was told all those years ago. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions for me, go ahead and ask. If not, we'll move on to our town attorney. Mr. Bowling. You're up. You're muted. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
One second. There I go. A couple of things. I helped Matt with the most recent grant application agreements, and I think that looks pretty good. Which I've, Matt, they were hearing that at their upcoming meeting. Is that correct?
That's right. Thank you.
And another thing I had a chance to do is I've made an inquiry with the county about the status of the current litigation with the rescue squad. In a nutshell, what's happened is that there's an identical case in either, I want to say Prince, Prince Williams County or Loudoun County. I can't remember which it was. And they are, have appealed their issue to the Supreme Court. And that issue is whether the county has the power to disband a rescue squad and then, and take the money that the rescue squad has. And that's now pending before the Supreme Court. The problem, of course, is that that's not very swift. I don't know exactly when the appeal was, was granted, but right now the Supreme Court, you're running somewhere around 15 months from the time they grant the appeal to hear the matter until you actually get a decision. And that may be a little optimistic. So that's not the best news in the world. And I reached out to them to see where, where, what, where we were with the idea of, of if the county got the money that they would in turn give it to the towns in some capacity to use for rescue squad purposes. So that's what I have to report on that subject.
Any questions for Mr. Bowling? Thank you, Mr. Bowling. Down the middle street.
You're up again. Being as we're, we're operating in this remote format under a local emergency, I'd always like to start this report with an update on the COVID-19 pandemic. Since around the beginning of October, the Thomas Jefferson Health statistic data has actually been okay. They had an increase in their percent positivity cases and hospitalizations in September. And then it, it got better more recently. I think those kinds of statistics informed some of the school district decisions. Admiral County Schools coming back to limited in-person for the kindergarten through second graders coming up soon. School board had that decision last week. But those numbers fluctuate pretty widely. And it has really turned into a notable health disparity of the youngest age group for infections is now the 20 to 29-year-olds. And of course, the, the largest group of fatalities is our senior citizens. And so we, at the college student and young adult level, really need to take care of ourselves and help take care of our elders. The racial and ethnic disparity in this pandemic is also very clear in the health department data. So the, the county level guidelines and ordinances around masking in groups of gatherings continue. We had an excellent mask distribution event run by the county staff last Friday. So appreciate their help there. And we have a forthcoming volunteer effort on public health outreach that Mayor Emeritus Manceagill is leading and can speak to. We had some good news looking ahead on the tourism front looking out to next year. We get help on tourist promotion from the Charlottesville Admiral Convention and Visitors Bureau. And they have taken the opportunity of this emergency to redesign permanently how they're going to be doing their work. You may or may not, as a tourist, ever have used the visitor center on Main Street in Charlottesville across from City Hall. But they're going to stop using that building for that purpose. And instead they're buying two sprinkler vans that they're going to decorate and deck out with tourism literature. And those will be mobile visitor centers going around both Charlottesville and Admiral County. And Scottsville will be one of the permanent homes on one day a week of this mobile visitor center. So I was glad to host their staff last week, give a tour of Scottsville and think about where might be the best places to park it. I don't think those will launch until the springtime. But I think that's an exciting example of the emergency prompting folks to think about how to do their work in a more dynamic way permanently. But I'm glad we're going to get on the map for tourism marketing. My other report items and major projects lately have been on agenda matters. So we can get into those later. The joint meeting with the Admiral County Board of Supervisors, capital planning, budget work and CARES project research. So happy to talk about those later.
Any questions for Matt or what have you had spoken to thus far?
I don't have any questions. Oh, sorry. Laura, it sounds like you have a question.
I do have a question. I am fairly curious in terms of what the parking locations were that you and C is CVB kind of narrowed down to in your discussions. Also just excited that they're coming down to Scottsville and spending time with us. That's great news.
The, the van is cut away and popping up on the passenger side. So they, they want a location where they can park it on the street and occupy a little space of sidewalk. And then be located near some other destinations that are helpful for tourism. And so the, the location that appealed to them the most at first impression was Canal Basin Square, where the sidewalk is double wide and they can actually pull the vehicle up onto the sidewalk and temporarily become part of Canal Basin Square. And people down to the boat launch, the museum is across the street. We have our restrooms and event area there. And then not the, in the thick of the busiest parking, they were trying to stick out a spot on Valley Street.
And with just a comment on that, that if we know in advance when this is going to be here, we might be able to get the museum to open up at the same time.
Yes. I was just going to say, if we know the dates, we can promo it. We can add, make sure that there's maybe special walking tours happening and so forth. So they're not sort of idly visiting the town without others knowing.
I said, I said that, that we, we might not, we might not get Saturday. So if, if Thursday is our day for extra tourism promotion, to make sure that we have something to offer on that.
Okay. One, one thing that might be interesting is to look at data or talk with the restaurants to see what night of week they're typically busy and maybe target on, on those evenings when we already have extra traffic and activity within the downtown area as well.
Okay, like is Thursday better than Tuesday for that?
Yeah, yeah. Since they have, they, they know from their sort of records which nights are, are more consistent for busy evenings.
Anything else for Matt at this point?
Would this be an appropriate time for Dan to discuss the trail?
Oh, sure. Why not? Dan?
Hey, everybody. Hope you all are well.
Good. First of all, we appreciate all that James and, and his crew did to find our, our hidden parking space. Put the steps up, you know, up there. Cut down that tree that knocked my back window out last year. And yeah, that's why we got back to that tree.
Well, a couple of things, Mr. Mayor, to follow up about. First of all, that effort was the culmination of a number of conversations between James and I. And I was so thankful that he was able to get that group of volunteers to come and work. So that was wonderful. And their ability to follow through was really the first big volunteer effort that we had had since Sam had completed this Eagle Scout initiative. And by the way, I was at his Eagle Scout ceremony this past Saturday night, which was really wonderful. And they were very, very thankful for all that we did as a town. There's even a check of $600 some dollars extra that they had from the project that I have that I will be bringing. So it's from the money that he raised from people that are going to be here specifically for the Van Cleef Nature Area. The one other thing I will tell you is I'm not going to talk about the specifics tonight, but I'm excited to share a new idea that will be related to the park next week. So in our public session, I will go a bit further and talk about a new follow-through that will be exciting to share.
In the interest of promoting that trail, because it looks very nice. And now that there's like wood chips down around the steps going up to it, it's pretty walkable. You know, and if we're having this van come down about tourism, I think it would be nice to have some signage down there just to get people to that entrance so they can see it and maybe even take a walk on it if they're, if they're game.
Yeah, one of the things, Zach, that's a good point that gets into something that Matt and I should talk about is when you have trails, there are different ratings, you might say. Some trails are pretty much accessible to anybody. Other trails, you would call this probably an intermediate trail. So you'd want to have some warnings up to say, you know, what it is and what it isn't. Because it is one that you need to be careful with. Long and short of it is you're right. And we'll figure out ways that we can have the proper explanation for it.
Great.
Yeah. Is there any way we could think about getting a more professional looking map, trail map? I think that's the, the one that we have that we've been Xeroxing that, you know, I've been putting around.
I think hand-drawn ones are really just the best. Yeah, we, we should talk about that too.
Because I think that's, I think that some people that I've talked to have been a little put off by that. They're a little concerned that, boy, if this is, you know, if this is any indication of the status of the, you know, the trails. And I'm a little concerned about going up there.
Sure. Well, there's parts of it that aren't even depicted on it. So that, that's another area that we'll, we'll talk about.
Yeah. So I don't know if we could, if we have any, like any assistance raising funding for that or whatever. But I think that's, that's a pretty big priority. Because it's, you know, we've got this fantastic resource and people are, you know, they're, they don't know about it. And when they do know about it, they don't know kind of a little concerned about how to access it. So.
Sure. Sounds like maybe there's a $600 donation coming in. Maybe that could.
That's kind of where I was going, actually.
Well, this is also an area, Dan, where I think both of our committees overlap and can help one another with something like that too.
Yep.
So let's talk further.
And economic development as well too.
Yeah, it's definitely a crossover.
That sounds great.
Sounds good, Dan. Thank you. And, you know, they say that this, this mobile van might not be here through the spring, but it's going to, depending where time flies, it'll be spring, you know.
I'm going to go stand out there right now and wait for it. So just, I'll be waiting for it.
I'll bring you a coffee.
Okay. See you there.
On our agenda, I have another three new topics. This is to help charter the hearers thing with the CARES money. So get to the acronyms going on around here. But I'll let Matt, let Matt explain this and we'll see something we can vote on next week. Is that correct?
Sure.
Just to finalize that.
I really appreciate the advice of both town attorney Jim Bowling and Mayor Emeritus Manceagill in shaping this. Where we landed was that it'll be most efficient to stand up here as a temporary volunteer effort during our state of emergency and treat them like our other volunteer committees, where the town has an approaching budget and we still have financial control. The mayor, Vice Mayor and I are signing checks, council reviewing those account statements. But we can empower our volunteers to distribute supplies and put on events. And staff can give them logistical support, make sure they have what they need. And we're meeting our community health goals together. So in your packet is the draft committee charter, setting the expectations for this volunteer group and explaining how the town staff can help them. And I'll be glad to defer to Ms. Gill and talk more about what she hopes to achieve.
Hello?
Hey.
Hello, we can hear you.
You can hear yourself.
Matt, I, Matt, I think that you described it quite nicely. And I, I, I feel our steering committee will be very happy with this agreement. That's all I have to say right now.
Any, any one of you have any questions for former Mayor Field? It looks pretty, pretty, like a pretty good document and we will vote to enact that next Monday.
Now, now, it does call for a council member liaison.
Say it again, please.
It calls for each committee has a council member liaison.
Oh, yes, it does.
So how are we going to handle that?
I, I saw that as well. It's in all of our other committees that there's a council member who's carrying reports back to the rest of the group.
Right.
You want to go?
What, what's your interest in that, counsel?
I can do that.
Okay.
So Matt, I, I'm just hearing voices. Who said they could do it?
I, this is Stuart. I can do that. So.
Okay, Stuart.
Yeah, I'd be happy to volunteer to do that.
Good. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else?
Somebody's got to keep an eye on you.
Let's move on to the CARES Act projects, which Boeing at the moment, but you, you know, one question will be, do we want to continue these, which obviously the downstairs computer education slash work center needs to be continued. We talked earlier about possibly rent subsidies, mortgage subsidies, people that, so they won't lose their homes. That's possible to do. Matt, you want to take over there?
As, as we talked about a little bit before briefly, the congressional language is clear about a, a spending deadline for the CARES Act at December 31st. It's unfortunate that it turns into a rush. It's money that the feds passed in April, but that we didn't see until August. And again, we still don't have real clear training or model programs coming down. So we've been working regionally to try to figure out some best practices real quickly and do cooperative contracts. We borrowed some contract language from Admiral County. Gordonsville is using some of our contract language in turn. And so we're learning and helping each other. But we also have to respond to the specific community needs that we're seeing. And this is high time for councils to talk about the problems that you're seeing in the community. What do you want to try to solve now? What do you think is going to get worse come winter and what should we prepare for? We have the second half of this CARES funding, $50,000 available to program. We can either double. We can either double down on the things that we're doing now or try to design something new. But before I went too far in contracting anything, I wanted to make sure that it's responding to problems that you see in the community.
Okay, open for discussion.
Matt, just some numbers quickly. How much, because how much did we spend? Because we did, we spent money on the town, we spent money on the remote learning workspace, and then we had money go into the business relief. What were the breakdown on those numbers? Again, do you have those?
The small business grants were the biggest part. That was 25,000. We, we got a good number of applications on that to where it's not competitive, but we've got right around $25,000 qualified. So that part seems to have worked, and I'll have the, I'll have the details on those for next week, the applications just came in. It's 15,000 to run the community center downstairs for four months. 5,000 for public health outreach. That's the budget for the HERS team to get to.
How much for HERS?
Five. And then 5,000 for town operations and overhead. That's been a little bit of PPE, some staff time, and supplies expenses for us.
These are all on page eight of your finance report, under the emergency expenses line 105303.
Yes, thank you.
There are four categories there of CARES money.
They're also on page four of the agenda and notes.
I will say on that finance report, all 25,000 is shown as being spent because we have given it over to CIC. You guys have not yet approved the grants, as Matt said. That's for next time.
Any other problems?
Well, I guess for me, oh, Laura, what, you go?
Go ahead, Zach.
Okay. I guess for me, you know, prioritizing sort of building out and supporting community needs, the remote learning and workspace is going to continue to be an issue through the winter. So I'm very much interested in continuing that for another four months, because that would get us right to the end of the school year. And I think that would be, I think that would be a good service to our community and would give us time to continue promoting it and getting the word out about it. If we've got $25,000 worth of money going out to businesses already, then that, that sounds to me like we could probably do that again. And, and I'm really worried about this winter when it comes to our storefronts on Valley Street, especially considering that we've had a couple closures in the last few months. Not all COVID-related, though. Then that leaves us with $10,000 left over. And so I'd like to hear if Nancy's still on the call, like of that $5,000, you know, how much has already been spent? You know, would another $5,000 get them through another four months of outreach or not, or, you know, or would the first 5,000 do it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. So Zach, what we're doing, Matt and I have been working really hard at finding places to supply us. And we've had, we're a little bit behind the eight ball in that we've had to wait for one company to get back to us, and now so right now, we will probably spend the 5,000, but our thoughts are that as we move forward, and this doesn't seem to be going away anytime soon, that perhaps additional funding would give us the opportunity to stockpile the masks and hand sanitizer that our businesses will probably need in 2021. So that's our thoughts moving forward. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you, Nancy.
Is there any way that we could fund, you know, vaccinations, COVID vaccinations when they come out, flu shots or something like that, that, you know, we can be proactive about, you know, to avoid this in the first place?
So Stuart, one thing that we had spoken about on the HERS Steering Committee is how could we, not, not really the vaccination or the antibody, but testing. How could we test the entire town of Scottsville? And we actually thought that it might be good to actually test all of the business employees. We've been talking about that. We just don't have a solution.
Okay.
I'd be happy to do some calling around on that. The, the trick will be that it has to, it does have to be paid out before Christmas. So I'm trying to think of a, a smart way of contracting this where maybe we prepay for work that we actually want done after the deadline.
I was gonna say, could we get, you know, vouchers or something for it, pay for those in advance?
If we can get a solid enough contract and a partner that we trust to pay the minutes for something, there's probably an acceptable risk on that.
What about, what about flu shots instead of COVID vaccines? That, that seems like something that we could maybe contract with someone to do now that might also have a, you know, significant health impact in the area.
Yep, get, do it through the pharmacy or something.
I mean, the pharmacy already does flu shots, and I, I guess I'm trying not to think, like, I don't want the town to double down on things already happening, you know, in town.
But I'm thinking in terms of people who can afford to get a flu shot, and.
Well, the health, the health department gives free food, food.
Do they?
Flu shots, and you, you maybe want to contact the health department to have a clinic in Scottsville.
Right, yeah, or outreach day or something.
Because it surrounds around the area.
Yeah.
A couple of mobile events here, but it's been a while, and it might be something where, I mean, not too mercenary, but can, can we pay you to come here more often than you otherwise would?
Well, and I think some of their partners, you know, I know in the past they've done that through JMRL and used them as a space and as a, a resource for advertising. And JMRL, of course, is closed to the public for the time being, so.
Could use the scan space.
Right, it might be that we have to sort of, if you guys want that, to step in and play, play that role.
Right, but, but I'm thinking that that's something that could potentially done free of charge, in other words. Like, that could be a matter of just networking.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Basically, they, they've been using stay in your car, and people line up and.
Yeah.
Like the market, yeah.
Yep.
Or a local school, even.
Matt, you, oh, sorry, Laura, go ahead.
I don't want to interrupt conversations, so let me let the current conversation conclude.
Going on a tangent as well there, so, oh, sorry.
The only thing else I was gonna ask, Matt, the $5,000 that the town has for PPE, is it gonna take $5,000 to get through the next four months, for example?
We're putting a lot of different things in that line, so I, I think that'll probably be the one that fills up next, because it's doing a bunch of different things, including the administrative fees for the other programs. So it, it might be wise to top that off.
All right, thank you.
So I wanted to speak out on behalf of food, just with a couple of contexts. One is that we do have a food pantry that distributes in the local area at Esmont, at the Nancy Community Center, and also one that can, that distributes out of the Scottsville Community Center, Boys and Girls Club, both once a month. The refrigerator unit at, at the location here in Scottsville is on the outs, so they can't store food currently, and there's such a backlog because of COVID of purchasing new refrigeration units that they don't have the capacity to store right now. So that is, that is somewhat of an immediate impact on our local residents. The other component that is important to me is that right now the local schools are providing free lunches to area children through December, and there has not been an update from the school board or the, the local school system as to whether or not that will continue next spring. So when I look at all of these options, I think about the businesses and making sure that we support them, and then I think about just basically, let's feed our families. And maybe having a discussion about how we define, you know, who those families are and how we do that. For me, to open up an additional service seems redundant, confusing. But if we can have somebody that's dedicated to outreach, that does some connecting the dots, that knows the people that are involved, both those that are in need and those that are providers, and maybe gets some pay to help make those connections stronger, such as the efforts that HERS is doing, that I see as time well spent. So spending it on a person that can help reinforce the two resources we already have so that they're being better utilized and better connected.
Other problems?
Well, so to clarify, Laura, the money would be spent on a person who connects people with the food pantry?
So I would, I would want to give money to both pantries to help stock the shelves, and then, yes, potentially pay somebody to, to help reinforce that, that the schools know that they exist, that the church groups know that they exist, that we've got the connection and resources with other food banks in the area to help, too. So it wouldn't be a long-term position, but it might be a, you know, a short-term contract for a couple months.
One thing Matt, one thing Matt and I talked about this morning was, just as this, this that helps small businesses that we are, have basically hired to spend their $25,000, there is bound to be, he's doing research right now on some sort of organization that you could give a certain amount of money, and they would see that people who needed rent assistance or mortgage assistance or food assistance, they would be like a clearinghouse, this sort of thing. So, yeah, that's in the works, as a suggestion.
Sure. That, that makes sense, and I, I like the idea of outreach and, because there, there is a lot of money and resources floating around, but it can be hard for a family that's under stress to find what they need and apply for stuff the right way, and then they don't get everything they're eligible for. So it's probably a fair point that what we really need is a, somebody to help bridge those gaps and not just set up another program that people don't hear about.
Yes.
My question, could some of that be done through that contract, though, if, if an organization already has people who do that type of outreach?
Oh, yes.
To say part of this contract is going to be ensuring that, you know, this amount of money we're giving you is spent on advertising and on that person's time doing outreach in our area?
Right, send, send one of your staff from your main office and, and put them on the ground here, meeting people and, and helping them. Yes.
Okay, well, I suppose then we will try to do our research by next Monday and come up with some more topics on this subject that we can discuss and maybe make make a decision on next week.
Yeah. Hey, Matt, just, just more information to help us inform our decisions. Would it be possible to get the usage of the remote learning and workspace, just how much traffic they've had so far?
Absolutely. It's only, it's only been a few weeks, but I'll get the, I'll get the numbers where it stands as of next Wednesday, and I'll put that in the report that goes out to you on Thursday.
Thanks. And the, and the reason why I asked for that is because I think the remote learning's really, or remote workspace is very important. But in particular, if there are certain times of usage that are more heavily used than others, we could, you know, so I'm interested in, you know, if there's like morning is more popular, we could make the current $15,000 go farther by reducing hours, for example.
Is there some way that we could look at coming up with the $400 or so that it costs to make a banner to help advertise? Can we put that in, in as, you know, some, a use of this next $50,000?
Yes, and that's a, that's a good example of things that can be prepaid. You can, you can buy banners that you actually hang later, and you can say buy in advance, magazine or radio advertising that actually is in the future.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
It's similar to what we do at the radios, right, Matt, in terms of ads?
We pay upfront for.
Yeah. And that, speaking of, that's something that we can use for both the learning center as well as efforts that we do with HERS.
Yes. Council may not know this, but we have a, we have a radio by that's been running periodically every so often, and Ms. Malusi and I review that topic, so as events have been changing, we've been tweaking the plans.
Okay, well, thank you. Some other areas that you think feel like CARES money, or no, just let me or Matt or somebody here in the office know, so we can start to do us some research on it.
Real quick, sorry, Matt, before we move on, do you just want to review what we've seen so far from the business grant? Numbers that have come back?
Sure. The, the applications came in right around that $25,000 target. So, so they weren't in a position of having to, to cut, but it wasn't unused either. There was one application from a business that was outside of town and didn't read the eligibility the right way. But the other ones that we got represent a really diverse set of sectors, newer versus older businesses, young versus old business owners. I was really impressed with the results on that, so we'll have their, their double-checked applications ready for approval next week.
Okay, moving on to the, actually, there's like a few items on the carry-on topics, but had to mesh together. As I mentioned in my report, Matt, Laura, and Thomas and I met last week, and we talked about capital improvement projects, and we talked about them in the framework of those being things that we want to talk to the Board of Supervisors about, and we'll be. So I'll turn it back over to Matt, so he can sort of fill you in on what we did and what we ended up with.
Can I, Vice Mayor, you did a lot of the prep work on this. Would you mind taking the lead on sharing what you've got on both of those items and how they fit together?
Not, not at all. So we had both the mayor, Mr. Ensworth and Mr. Wallace and I met to basically go through some past discussions that town councils had to focus in on what we'd like to accomplish with the Board of Supervisors, and if I can frame it as this, this is the first time that we're having a meeting. And as Mr. Bowling very wisely advised, we need to go in with very specific and focused requests of what we want to accomplish. So rather than going in with all kinds of different agenda items and discussion items and a conversation, we're going, the goal is to go in with a very specific proposal request. Four items, maybe, that we try, try to accomplish. So with that in mind, I proposed areas that align with, again, past conversations that council has had, some of the items that are within our capital improvement plan that we haven't yet finalized, and our comprehensive plan. The first one, if you look at your notes on page five that were sent out to council, is, is titled "Representation." So all the other growth areas and around the county of Albemarle have a community advisory committee that different county employees meet with, whether it's to prioritize roads to get attention, whether it's to prioritize how growth happens, utilities and resources, and they are, they are sort of the voice that the Board of Supervisor goes to, as well as the staff, to get advice on these different plans. And right now, and so in Albemarle, we do not have a community advisory committee, but we do have a town, and so the first request to the Board of Supervisors is to treat the town of Scottsville as if it is the Southern Albemarle's Community Advisory Council. So when every effort that the county does to reach out to our peers around the county to get feedback, they should always be reaching out to the town of Scottsville in the same way. Whenever they're giving updates to the community advisory councils, they should be giving the same kind of updates to the town of Scottsville. Whenever they're doing research, publications of plans for other areas around the county to community advisory councils, they should also be including town of Scottsville's official documents in that same way, or giving us the courtesy of town staff to be doing the same. So it's a very simple request that has long-lasting implications of positive for all the residents within our town limits, as well as the entire region and area. So that's the first, that's the first request. That has implications on the website. It means that we have representation on the website. We have representation in the infrastructure, which is the next point, infrastructure and access. So each of these community advisory councils helps inform planning, they inform economic development, they inform parks, they inform school plans. So to recognize our comprehensive plan that is an official document and to include it in the County of Albemarle documents, right? So when we update it, it gets updated. When they're looking at plans for roads. Right? So when we update it, it gets updated. When they're looking at plans for roads or constructions or parks and trails, that is a document that is part of their toolkit when they're looking at those things. But this would also include infrastructure such as water, sewer, stormwater, flood control, telephone, communications, internet, roads, cultural housing. All those things are infrastructure where we want our comprehensive plan to be a check and a trigger again to encourage further conversation. The fourth area is economic development. So the county has a very detailed plan in terms of growth. I do have a stable internet connection, should just let you know in case I get cut off. Um, that, that, again, the county has an economic development plan for the county that currently does not include the town, the town of Scottsville. And we are in fact a growth area. The positive that I would like to accomplish with the board of supervisors is to let them know we have all the utilities already in place. We have the businesses. We can process the paperwork. We have the internet, not just high-speed, but fiber internet. We have the water. We have the utilities. Not only, we have the flood control system. We have emergency response. We have additional police officers on top of the county. These are all things that can help accomplish economic development in the county and, and we're one of those contributors. And that also reaches into the tourism. So Scottsville Area Community and Visitors Bureau has historically not been in touch. We've sort of always had to reach out to them. So I was very excited with Mr. Lawless's news about them coming to us. But again, to keep that relationship ongoing and continuing with intention. Fourth area is in the environment. So share the good news. The James River is historic scenic river at the Horseshoe Bend. And a lot of past conversations throughout the county focuses a lot of their efforts on, on the environment and on trails and pathways within the urban ring and along the Redana River. When in fact, the Cal, Albemarle County has also the James River that is a huge contributor to tourism, to the environment, to our health. Van Cleef Nature Area, which we all know and love, to Tier Creek, Walnut Creek, even Simpson Park are these assets, including Doyar Park. So trying to make some headway again, of maybe connecting those in joint with the county. I think there's a conversation that we can really open up. So that's my, that's my lead in. You'll notice the second document that I sent to town council today included the capital improvement plan. And some of these items fall under the exact areas that I brought, that I'm bringing to you tonight in terms of discussion for our meeting later this month.
Yeah, Laura put a lot of work into this and I really appreciate it. So now we open up the questions to Matt and Laura.
Well, one thing, one thing I'd like to say too is in agreement with what was said. First of all, thank you Laura and Matt for putting that together. The one thing I will say to you that I think going back to the parks and trails, we've had a lot of dialogue with the county, but not on the level of the supervisors. We've met with the Parks Committee. We've met with the people who work with trails, have a longstanding relationship with them, which is great. And our efforts, when we've worked with them, have really helped us to be able to get in sync with them on a lot of things. But again, this has not been at the level of supervisor and that really represents a much more important opportunity to bring our needs before them. And I think, again, following up on how to bring the parks and trails in. Again, we already have the county support on a number of levels with the parks themselves, with the park, Albemarle County Parks and Rec, but we want to do so at the supervisor level. So I really would be interested in a further dialogue about bringing that forward.
So part of what the staff has really asked and needs guidance from us tonight is what kinds of documents to prepare for that meeting? To, you know, for us to look at, like, I didn't know I was going to be presenting this to you tonight. So I apologize. I would have done a slideshow to make it more clear to you in the public, but, but this is a good sort of run-through of what kinds of things do we want to bring forward with these four areas that we're presenting with the board supervisor meeting? How do we want to tell that story, make that ask and have that conversation?
Would it be worthwhile, again, Laura, this is really, really great and I, and I like your organization here on these four, you know, issues. Well, two things, I guess. So one is, it sounds like in this document, there are some specific asks. So for example, we would like the county to recognize the town comprehensive plan. So my, my, so my one, my one thought is that we should probably divide the meeting into things that we would like them to take action on during the meeting. Or.
Correct.
Soon. So like, we don't want to leave unless we know how you feel about us being a representative of Southern Albemarle or, you know, recognizing our comprehensive plan as part of development. So, and the other bits feel like discussion. And so I think identifying the things that are specific to ask versus discussion. And then just in terms of presentation, you know, I think we should sort of advertise ourselves because I don't think they really understand how great we are. And I think, so like, what would be a highlight? So if I'm looking here at infrastructure, how, what's like a quick statistic that could be shown that about internet? What's a quick statistic or thing we could show about our levy system? What's a quick thing we could show them about our police force? What's a quick thing we should show them just about like the library? Because we do work with other, you know, regional organizations. So I think, and, and this should not be long and text light, but just a visual document so that we can sort of highlight the things that we have as assets that put us in a strategic and important position.
Good point.
Well, I've started a very text-heavy and image-free version. It's about two pages that sort of covers, Matt, I don't actually have it on this computer here at home, but would you mind just sending that out real quick if you've got it in front of you?
Sure.
And if folks want to take a look, I, I completely agree with you, Zach. I think the part of the trick there that I found in trying to put that together is that it's hard to capture in a single statistic or a single image from one of our, you know, consultant reports or comprehensive plan, the scope of some of these partnerships. And so I found it easier to do that in sort of shorter narrative form. I, I did try to break it up to be focused on, and, and it kind of lines up here with the four areas that Laura has highlighted. But some discussion of, you know, specific resources we have of, you know, the specific infrastructure in place. But yeah, I'm open to any and all suggestions on that one. So look it over and feel free to email us back on that.
One thing, I've observed a lot of Zoom meetings so far.
Yeah.
You can give them the text because they want the detail, but prepare flashcards or PowerPoint slides, setting out the key points to give them something visual to focus on.
And I think that's probably going to be where you, yeah, be in the middle there.
Yeah, I was just going to add that we were, we were planning to send kind of a summary document of the town of Scottsville, right? Because with that, we don't want to assume that every board supervisor member knows who we are or how the town operates. And so rather than taking up meeting time with that, we wanted to send that information in advance.
But so I think what you guys, what Matt's just sending out then, if we look at that maybe more as that homework document that we'll share with their staff to put in front of board of supervisor, you know, members ahead of time. But then we can sort of pare down from that. What are the highlights that we want to be able to share? You know, on a slide or in a PowerPoint or something during the meeting while we're there. Highlight the specific points of our, our asks there.
One of the things, so that, one of the things to explain in there is I don't think the supervisors in general would know that we've been working for eight years, for example, on this park. And we've had a longstanding partnership with the DGIF and with them and DCR. And so I do think there would be an aspect of it where we want to present that and show them, this is what we've done. And then here's how we can use your help, you know, to, on a super, I think the one thing that, that, so the, the thing about bringing the, them into it is in the future, they may be able to allocate us some money and resources that we haven't had before. That's the difficulty we've had from the Parks Committee themselves. They liked what we did, but we need to have on the supervisory level. So we're in a future year, they would come up with some budget money two years from now or something that would help some aspect of the park.
This is right at the beginning of their budget process. So if there is a specific ask for a budget line, this, this is the, the golden opportunity to consider that.
Yes, rather than.
Yeah. Lauren, well, another, I don't know where to kind of fit this in, but there is a, there's a perception among the board of supervisors that, that Scottsville is not interested in economic development. We're not an economic development zone. They'll, you know, it's all about Prozay and it's all about North 29. We, we could let them know, give them a sense of the opportunity that's down here. I mean, if you take a look at the factory and you take a look at, you know, the 200 acres that we've got on the other side of Van Cleef and the fact that people are now.
Yeah.
Working more remotely and, and, you know, being outs, increasingly attractive to people. We would like them to just sort of keep an eye open for opportunities with economic development and that we're not, you know, trying to be, you know, we're not trying to, to stay as small as we are now.
Right. So a couple of documents that we talked about sharing and let, let me know if, if there's anything else. But the mixed use and mixed income study, Thomas and, and Matt have on here, the West Downtown Small Area Plan. Right? So it'll be draft form because we won't have voted on that before the meeting. But we could potentially agree to share that draft. We have the town comprehensive plan. But, but one of the selling points of Scottsville is we have a diversity of business owners. And we also have a lot of business owners that have been in town for, how long has Ace been there, Matt?
I think we gave him 125.
Yeah, I was going to say over a hundred years.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a beautiful highlight.
That's a good point. Yeah, I could definitely slide that in there.
That's a beautiful slide bullet point of, of, you know, we have got the B store that's got a niche that nobody else in Virginia has. And at the same time, we have this 100-year-old hardware store. Like, we are here to stay.
Yep.
Invest, right? Commit. Help us, help you. Yep.
So what do we need to do next then? I'd say that I think this is a good idea to be specific. And one thing I've found with Albemarle County, I've, I've gone to three of their meetings and, and got my three minutes in on three different occasions. And there was no interaction at all. I just made a statement. They said, thank you. So I felt like I was talking to the wall. But as a single citizen, and all, this is pre-COVID by the way, all three topics, I don't know if they ever looked at again. So I'm glad to see the town can, can be the, the glue that, you know, that can, can make this happen and make us, you know, recognizable. Just speaking for myself as one citizen, I felt like they thought I was taking up the town.
Okay. And remember, this, um, this meeting is two weeks from now. So it's just the extra Monday, the fourth Monday at five o'clock and it'll be, it'll be Zoom. So I hope that's not too bad as far as the end of the workday or, or moving around. But I'll be, I'll be here just like normal for this and it'll be a joint Zoom meeting. So you'll see the same screen, but split up more different ways as the supervisor wants.
So, yes, Mr. Bowling.
One thing you may want to do is instruct Matt or authorize Matt to release whatever you're going to talk about to the county executive ahead of times. And one, he may have some very pertinent comments. And, and, and two, it will keep him from being surprised.
Yeah, we talked about that.
But that's a good point. I, I haven't done that yet and I haven't heard anything from the county level if they're having this same kind of conversation about us or, or not. So if, if the presentation that Ms. Malusi gave sounds pretty good as far as direction, I think it's probably time two weeks out to get up with the county staff and see what they're doing as far as prep. If they, they might have some of these things not already on their side.
Right.
I suspect though that it's the big guys and the little guys. And by, by, some of these things are, strike me as no brainers such as focusing in on the town as, as, as a, as a growth, as the, as the person to coordinate with for economic development and growth and comprehensive plan for this locality. I mean, this area around Scottsville. But they have a little advanced notice and you may, you may get some action that Zach was talking about at the meeting instead of what Eddie was talking about. They just listened to you and they said, well, we'll get back to you.
Right, right.
That's a good point. If the first they're hearing of it is at the meeting, they might not be keen to decide something right then.
No, it's not going to happen.
So before we go, I would like all of you to think about infrastructure a little bit more. If there's something specific in there that we want to drill into. Because water services, the schools, roads, those are a broad range of topics. So if there's something that really resonates, where we want to bring it to the forefront, again, now's the opportunity within that.
Laura, just to say it again, Matt, why don't you mention, when you and I talked, you had mentioned if this, this was an opportunity to even ask them, say, hey, y'all want to fund the Overlook Trail or something like that? Can you share with them what you shared with me?
Well, the, sure, the, the, I'm going to go back to this here. The, the table that's before you about capital budgets, it's organized really well and it takes a pretty ambitious view of grant applications. I, I didn't assume perfect success, but most of these items, we're not paying full price because we're finding some kind of help for it. But even so, it's, it's more than we have in the bank and it really stresses our debt capacity to be able to do everything that's on us. So it would be very appropriate to look at this multi-colored list of, of the vice mares. And if there are certain things that you just don't think can be done without the county's help or that you think would be good to ask them for because it lines up with their goals, circle and star those things and we can try to make that ask to begin to get it onto their capital improvement plan. They have a long process that goes into building their version of this document. But this might be a good time upfront to tell them, here's a project that we think is in our mutual interest and we can't pay for it ourselves. So let's get it on your radar.
So are we planning to dig into this capital improvement plan in further discussion tonight?
I think what we should do at this point is.
Because we keep kicking it off. This is now the fourth month that we kicked it back. And so I'm, I just wonder how long we're going to keep kind of waiting for feedback versus discussion.
Yeah. Don't, don't you feel perhaps that we should, everybody should probably have one, one greater interest than the other? Even for the overall interest of the whole thing is important. Let you and Matt and I know any comments, any suggestions for improving sometime before the end of this week. So we'll have a chance to put the concrete thoughts down on paper for the meeting next week. Should we go over it then, does that sound like?
I mean, a couple of things that I can comment on here, just having, having looked at it. Like, I think like the entrance corridor signs and plantings, like ARB talked about that like last year, but nothing really moved on it. Like, didn't get quotes or whatever. But I feel like that's something that could be bumped up myself in terms of redoing, because that's already been something that we've talked about needing to be done. I don't think the county necessarily needs to have a part in doing that, but maybe, you know, if they, if it's under their tourism angle, that might be an interesting place for partnership.
I'd like to just point out that even though it may have caused some heartburn for a few folks, the Small Area Plan Special Committee was able to kind of put together a lot of, a lot of progress in short areas, short span of time. And if you're looking to concentrate on one specific area and get some consensus on it, get some verbiage that really is presentable, it may be worthwhile putting together a special committee just to focus on that. And you can draw from other committees. You can draw from town council, folks who are interested in discussing it. People who have specific insights and specific interest in forming, you know, a, a strategy on that. People who have specific insights and specific interest in forming, you know, a, a strategy on that. And it might be worthwhile to do something like that. Because realistically, it really is very difficult to try to come to some consensus on something that's so broad and has so many facets. And so many conflicting, I mean, there's so many scenarios that could come out of that as far as your priority and, and specific amounts. So it might be worthwhile to do something like that. If anybody's interested in pursuing something like that, that would be my, honestly, I really was encouraged by the progress that, that happened just because of that. And honestly, I, and I'm not even taking any credit for that because I just, I just, I just organized it. People came and they were, I didn't do hardly any of the work. It just, I just put people in the room together and they did it. So if we could do something like that for something like this, I don't know, if, if that's, if that's not something that is, you know.
That would be a good suggestion if we had more than two weeks to get this thing put together. So that, that's our problem at the moment. Wait until next Monday is when this joint meeting is.
Just so, just so it's clear, I'm specifically following up on what Zach said. Or I'm actually suggesting to you as a council that we ask for some money for either the handicap access or the overlook trail access, one or the other.
Yeah.
Related to, I'm, I'm asking specifically that we say, hey, we need 50,000 for this or 150 for that. And Matt, I would look to you and Laura. So, so from my perspective, I'm asking, like in other words, I'm saying, so Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on what Laura said, I do think it's wise if we take a little more time and we clarify right now a couple of our asks. And I'm willing to let Matt, Matt, I mean, in a little bit of a sense, you, the one thing that you have to understand, Jim, since you're new on council is you're correct, we do want to have a process where we want to go through and get public input and that's great. And that's, process is important. Right now, as we prepare to go talk to the county, I think, Matt, you kind of understand, you and Laura, and especially would be in the best position to understand where we are. And I think the wisest thing for us to do is to come up with what are the top two or three of this list? Because that's what we want to ask. The fifth, sixth, eighth, whatever. It's just not going to be, we, we can only get a couple of things in front of there and really advocate for them. And I'm willing, I mean, and I'm happy to say, maybe, maybe the park isn't one of them, but I think it is. But let's get it down to those top two or three.
May I say something, Nancy?
Of course.
This is the first step. So I think, I, I like the concept of what Jim said. But I, I feel it needs to be a committee or a conversation between the two governmental bodies. And we actually have someone on town council who is on the county economical, economic development committee. And I think that's a big step forward. I think we take baby steps with the county and move forward methodically.
I mean, my thoughts, Laura, in terms of like having something ready in, in relation to this, you know, document for our meeting. I, I sort of feel comfortable going in with this, because again, we're not going to like get money at this meeting.
Well, but right now we have a document with things we can't pay. It's not clear what our priorities are within this. I mean, if, if, if we all agree that this is what we want to do for the next five to six years with these amounts, that's, that's one thing. But Matt's made it clear, we can't move forward with this plan, even with the grant matches and, and guidance. So staff needs their help to pare it down for their purposes.
I got you.
And that, then paring down will help us focus with the conversation with the board of supervisors. So like, we have said yes to a side block grant, right? And that's, the design is, is next year, the construction would be the following year. You know, that's over $80,000. We're $80,000, right? So if we're still committed to that, then that's, that, that's a good place to start. Because now we've taken out $80,000. So how much, so, so how can we accomplish the other priorities we have now that we've committed, committed that amount?
Right.
And if, and if that's too much for us, that puts $80,000 back on the table where we can do a bigger variety of the smaller things.
Exactly. And not my place to say, council has to set those parameters.
Yeah.
I, I'm gonna just say one more time is, Matt, the one thing that you do bring to the table, again, I'm not trying to put you in an awkward spot, but I'm, I am trying to say you do understand that maybe what you can do is communicate with Laura, because Laura certainly has run this and done a great job of it. Laura, I would also say I trust you also with saying, because we ultimately have to come up with two or three. We can't have 10, 20, 30. We gotta have the top. And if, and again, whatever you think they are, even if you said it's putting a pond of pink flamingos, if that's what you think the best thing to do is, then, then I'm for it, so to speak.
It's a great economic plan, Dan. Well, so what I've, what I've heard is, is, is so far, just from tonight's discussion, I mean, an emphasis on trails is of interest. Is, am I hearing that correct?
Yes, I, I think emphasis on trails is, is good. And I'm also looking at the dollar signs here, like things that, you know, we can't do on our own or we wouldn't want a partner. You know, because like I saw the Canal Basin Square canopy in repairs, like, yeah, but ultimately, like, we should probably pony up the money to pay for, you know, continuing maintenance on the boats and all of that, which is another conversation we need to have about, you know, boat maintenance. But that's another, that's, that's another conversation. But you know, like, and even building systems or something like that. But I'm looking at vehicles, right? So vehicles is a place, because we're talking about our police, where we might want to find a place of common funding. Because as our report showed tonight, and they often show, our cops help out, Alamo County cops. So that seems like a place where we might want to ask for money. The overlook trail is a huge price tag. I don't know if we have a lot of information on what the final cost of that is, because I don't know if we've fully explored, like what all the funding streams might be or how that might work out. But, you know, it's at least a number to work with that's a benefit to the county in terms of their own trail systems and connecting, you know, their interest in parks. I do think it would be worthwhile, although there's no money attached to it, talking about access to the river. Because, because, you know, I don't think we're going to get a CSX trail. But if we could talk to them about what is your interest in, because we have an interest in getting people down to the river and in keeping the river clean. And we know that the Department of Gamble and Indian Fisheries manages that boat landing. What sort of networking could we do? And it might involve some costs, but I feel like that might be more networking together. How do we work with the county to get better river access then?
That, and that overlaps actually beautifully with the relic trail and the CSX trail and the parks that they're already partnering with us on. So I think, I think that's a really solid conversation.
The, the one thing I will tell you, and maybe I'll, I'll spill the beans for a second. I was gonna wait till next week, but I will spill the beans on this one thought. Is we have talked before about actually having an overlook on the overlook trail. And we've talked about the idea of having a place, maybe in honor of our former mayor, Barry Grove. And so the initiative that I was actually gonna propose next week, actually, but I'll, I'll say, would be the area that we have a specific overlook. And I'm talking about just right above the parking lot that maybe creates a space for people to have picnic tables or whatever. But it wouldn't be too complicated. But in, in his honor, first step, first area that we would do. And the other thing I'll say, going back to what Nancy just said, is I think at the very least, I would, maybe what I would say, Laura, is let me have a minute or two in this conversation. And I'll tell maybe the history of the park, a little bit about what they've done, so they're aware of where we are. And we can tell them, this is, you know, here's some of our big things that's coming up. Love to have more of them understand or take them on a tour or whatever, you know, it's more in the sense, making them aware. And we've had a good, great relationship with Dan Mahan and Crickenberger and others. I know Crickenberger's not there anymore. But being able to then invite them to have them come and learn more. I can't remember, some years ago, I get, I forget who the, there were two supervisors I gave a tour. It was so long ago, I can't remember who they were.
It might've been Matthew and Tim. So you also have the, where we all have the BCNA plan. So that, again, that's another beautiful document just in advance for our discussion.
That's what I was thinking, to include a short write-up, you know, a brief overview with that preliminary packet. So they're already familiar.
Okay. So we haven't touched at all on the flood system. Is that anything? Is that something we just want to keep with our current seven, what is it, $17,000 that we get from them every year?
You know, I thought about that because, you know, I thought about replacing pumps and all of that. And I know that that might still be some ways down the road. I, I kind of feel like keeping the memorandum of understanding as it currently is, is really important, just to make sure that's shored up.
So let's say that.
That's another place where the cost of that, we, we've estimated. And we've actually done actions ourselves to make sure we have money for it. You know, in terms of raising meals taxes, the purpose of that was to pay for that kind of capital improvement work. That was the rationale. And so I, I sort of personally feel like that, that is more our responsibility. Among all of the asks, I feel that there are more expensive and more urgent things that we could be asking for at this time.
But again, they don't realize by us investing that time and effort and planning that the half million dollar in assets that we're helping preserve, that contribute to the accounting tax base. Right? So that's a fun fact.
That is a fun fact. But is that a thing where we would want like more out of the MOU? Or is that something where we would just, or we would want them to contribute later?
I think we just shared that that's taking place. So that if there comes a point in the future where we need additional assistance, at least that base level has been shared.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Other comments?
Discussion? As a, as a heads up, I guess, one of the, one of the question mark items in the, in the out year on this plan is the recycling center. I think the board of supervisors is probably gonna ask us about that. That was in their capital improvement plan for beginning stages of work and they had to cut it in the spring because of COVID. You'll remember they, they looked at the concept five or seven years ago of remote solid waste convenient centers where you could take your trash and your recycling and then it would all be carried away to IV and then go to a landfill from there. And then your plan won a key and it didn't happen. And they're, they're baby stepping back into that idea now. So I suspect they will probably ask us, do we want this and where do we think it should go? But that's something they would pay for entirely on their own as a new service. So maybe have that in mind. It's, I suspect it's an outreach item that they'll, they'll ask us about and want to know.
Do you know where that proposal site is? Because we don't.
No, the, the capital plan that they had back in March, it set aside a pot of money to build it, but it didn't give a location. Site selection was a subject the first go-round and so they're not touching it back yet. Previously, it was on county-owned property. So they, I might.
Donna told me it was, uh, it was gonna be, remember when we had the proposal for the transfer station a number of years ago? So you put over by the school, old school, by the apartments. And this would be sort of the same general area. Somewhere over near the Scottsville Apartments.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I feel like that might be a thing where we might ask for time to deliberate ourselves. You know, I, I like a recycling thing, but, you know, historic overlay district.
Right. Right. I mean, that's a heavily used area for sports, softball, basketball, boys and girls clubs. So, yeah.
Yeah. Losing a baseball court would be tough.
Yeah, that, no, we don't want that.
Yeah.
That's the only other thing that came to my mind looking at the list.
Okay, well, you think of stuff and let us know.
Laura, does that feel workable? Do you feel like you have notes that are helpful for?
I think so. I mean, what I, we, we may need a, I basically would like to share the official documents and a slideshow with all of you before we walk into that meeting. So that we may call just a, perhaps a special meeting, just to make sure we've got all our ducks aligned. That makes sense to everybody.
Doesn't me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we can, we can also figure out who's speaking, because it'd be nice if we all have a voice versus not.
Well, I guess I should open it in interviews, you know, to tell them about parks and the stewardship of economic development or whatever, you know, not enough. Would everybody have a couple of minutes to.
Yeah.
That's for our specific calls.
Yeah, introductions and kind of key issue.
And before we part ways, Mr. Bulling, because you're so tuned in to what's happening with these conversations, is there any golden nuggets that we are missing that you would advise on considering?
Well, I think you've really said it, Laura. Don't try to do too much and keep it simple.
Okay. Thank you again for your, for your guidance.
Anything else anybody's mind before we go home?
I'm just wondering, is Alamo County doing the same thing we're doing right now?
I would say their staff, some of their staff are, yes.
You can't see my chief, but I got a tongue in the.
That's all right. We want, we want to do this right, because this is not the first time and it is not the last time. This is the beginning of how it will be, right? Well, that's how it's gonna be.
I believe, I believe.
But nobody else has anything. I thank everybody for the time this evening and we'll work on this, pay it down, get it right and be impressive when we get to four of them. And so if anybody has any questions, let me know.
Great.
I'll enjoy the video.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thanks to everyone for attending. It's two minutes till nine o'clock on October 12th, 2020. We'll record this and post it on YouTube here poppy. And if you're tuning in in the future, thank you very much. Good night.